Good afternoon. We actually began our meeting at noon today, but we had a closed session discussion. So we are resuming our meeting here at two. We recessed until two, so we actually had started earlier. But welcome to those of you that are here today at two o'clock. We're going to have, begin with our meeting with an invocation by Pastor Mark Key, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Limble. And please stand if you're able.
Good afternoon, and may we pray. Now gracious God, God of all people, God of all places, God of peace. We gather in your presence this afternoon, giving thanks for life, health, strength, giving thanks to you for this good place in which we live, our county, our city and towns. We thank you for the work of the county commissioners and pray your blessings upon each of them. Thanking you and asking you to bless also all those who are county employees and each one who is here today with vested interests and investments. We just pray your blessings upon the proceedings and may everything that is done be pleasing to you and bring you glory. We pray for our world. We pray for peace in our world. We thank you for our first responders, our military personnel, our law enforcement officers, and pray your blessings and protection over each of them. Thanking you, God, for the gift of life and health, giving you praise and glory. We pray all of this in the mighty name of God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Pastor Key, thank you. Thank you for being here today. I'd like to mention that Vice Chair Wizard Hunt is participating virtually today, and I know that Commissioner McDaniel will be back momentarily. Before our actual meeting continues, we actually have an update first from Joshua Swift, our Public Health Director. He's actually going to give us our State of the Community Health Report and Community Health Assessment. And while he's coming up, I'll mention that following him is Chase Law, who's the CEO of the Arts Council there, is going to give a very brief little closeout. She's unfortunately going to another place. I'm not going to say a greener pastor because it's New York City. I'm not going to say that. But in any case, she has a very short report, and then we will be ready to go. So.
So thank you, Ashley. Will whoever put the cheat notes?
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Appreciate this opportunity to give a brief update on our community health assessment and our State of the County Health Report. Our community health assessment, this is something we're required to do every, at least every four years as a health department per our accreditation standards. And then our State of the County Health Report is an update. We also do sending both to the state every March, and the State of the County Health Report is done the years we do not do a community health assessment. So you can see this is the group in 2021 when we did our last community health assessment. Our steering committee won't read the names, but you can see this is several individuals throughout the county from law enforcement, the school system, hospitals. And this really, you know, I would just want to portray a few things. One, this involves the whole community, and this is our goal is to get more and more individuals in the community. It's hospitals, it's Health and Human Services, it's our city and county governments, nonprofits, private business community. It's going to take the whole community to make a dent in some of these things that we're going to be talking about or I'm going to share with you in just a few minutes. So it takes the whole community. So next, just a little bit of the framework that we're basing this off of is the social ecological model. And basically, you just think about yourself and how you make the decisions or how things that affect your health or well-being, how there's individual decisions. Then there's inside interpersonal with others in your family, institutional. It could be your church, it could be your school, it could be your place of work, all the way to your community, which is cities and towns, neighborhoods, to the policy level, which could be local politics, county, city, state and federal. So this next, I'm not going to read all of these numbers, but this is some of the data that we're looking at. We're looking at the leading causes of death in Forsyth County. This is per 100,000 population, and you can see this, I just wanted to take note or make a note of the trends that we're seeing. So overall, we have seen an increase in the overall death rate. When you look at some of these, such as cancer, we've seen that it has actually declined, while at the same time, heart disease has increased in Forsyth County. You can see chronic lower respiratory disease has declined some, unintentional injuries has increased quite a bit, almost doubled. And then you can see cervical vascular disease or stroke has stayed relatively the same. So I would also note that unintentional injuries, that involves violence, overdoses, which will be covered shortly. The next slide really is this, some of those same numbers, but really comparing us to the state average. You can see we're quite similar as far as cancer. Actually, even though our heart disease is up, is trending up, is better than the state level. Very similar for lower respiratory disease. Unintentional injuries, unfortunately, we're higher than the state average, and stroke is relatively the same. And again, these are reminders, this is per 100,000 population. Next, we're going to take a deeper dive and look at infant mortality. So you can see, and this is going from, if you look from right to left, our infant mortality overall in Forsyth County has decreased. Actually, it's decreased more than the state average, which is great. But then when you look down further, you can see our rates compared, when you break it out by race and ethnicity. And this will show how we, that comparison across the state. But you can see that unfortunately, while our overall rate has went from 9.8 to 8.1, our black and non-Hispanic has went from, has went up from 15 to almost 16. This is per thousand live births. This is the number of deaths per live births. And then you can see our Hispanic rate has decreased as well, and our white rate has went up. And I will just note obviously when you see, because you can see when you look at some of these numbers, the rates, especially our black, non-Hispanic and our Hispanic, Latina, how those numbers can move up and down, that obviously smaller numbers, a few, one or two or a few deaths, that could impact those numbers a few percentage points or half percentage point. So next, this is just another way to look at the overall trend. You can see over time since 2015, overall, we're a little bit higher, but you can see that the rate went up, especially in 2017 and 2019. And this next slide shows that five-year rolling average in Forsyth County versus North Carolina. And this is the disparity, excuse me, the disparity among African-American and Hispanic babies' death rate versus white death rate. Unfortunately, you can see 13 and 17, it was at two. It was twice the rate. Now it's almost three times the rate. You know, this tends, as I said in the other slide, it tends to go up and down depending on the number of deaths and because you're a smaller population. But also, we're seeing the effects of during the pandemic, access to prenatal care was hindered greatly because of social distancing, is access to doctors' offices. And unfortunately too, during the COVID pandemic, I mean, we had some, you know, young babies before the age of 12 months who passed from COVID. Sorry, I've got everything going off here. I apologize for not pausing that. Drug overdose death rate on our next slide, you can see this drug poisoning deaths per 100,000. This is from the State Center for Health Statistics, and you can see our rate in 2015 compared to where it is now. It's doubled, more than doubled. So there'll be more slides just to cover, you know, what we're doing about that. And again, that's a partnership, especially in Health and Human Services with Behavioral Health Services and all across our campus. Next slide, notice a lot of statistics, is looking at that five-year leading causes of death. And again, how do we compare drawing us back to the state? Overall, slightly higher. Our cancer, among all sites of cancer, is roughly a little bit higher, but not much. Heart disease, we're doing better. Unintentional injuries, unfortunately, we're worse than the state. Stroke and chronic lower respiratory disease, we're about the same. So. Again, now we're pulling it to life expectancy. So when you look at life expectancy across Forsyth County, how we compare across the state, relatively similar, obviously not this point one difference from the state. And it really hasn't decreased really statistically significantly. It's not significant to decrease from 7.9 to 77.6. So this next slide, you've probably seen or heard me talk about this before. This is, the data is a little bit old, it's from 2019. Unfortunately, the CDC didn't repeat this study, hasn't repeated it since 2019. We're hoping to, we're trying to data mine this, get this data together. And unfortunately, what we're seeing, and we see this nationwide, and we're seeing it here, that your zip code affects your health sometimes more than your genetic code. You can see some of the communities that have a lower life expectancy than others. You know, we see in some parts of the county, county, city where life expectancy is, you know, really high, into the 80s, average life expectancy, and others, it's late 60s. So next, I just want to share with you the health priorities that came out of this steering committee, out of this work group and the community health assessment. Those were to reduce infant mortality and that disparity ratio, reduce our chronic diseases, reduce behavioral health risk, drug overdose and mental health, and reduce youth violence. So the first one is infant mortality and that disparity ratio. Our vision is that all babies are born healthy and thriving, carried in healthy homes, and they see their first birthday. So you can see some of the programs that have been implemented here in the county, but really a big focus is on preconception health. So obviously, there's the health of the baby after he or she is born, but it's the health of the mother before the baby's born is very important. Really focused on our Hispanic and our African-American communities. Our Infant Mortality Reduction Coalition, several of you have walked in the fall when we hold that walk, but they're working all year round about how can we reduce these barriers to prenatal care, to make sure that moms are, you know, healthy before they conceive and that the babies come here and they have cribs and we have car seats, that baby has the best chance possible. And you can see just some of the programs we have at the health department. And between those programs, we're serving over, right now, over 1,200 mothers in the community. Gave out over 100 cribs last year, and also lots of, over 370 participants in our Safe Sleep programs. So, you know, unfortunately, what we're seeing with a lot of our deaths and that this time period, the infant mortality is preterm birth, very immature, very preterm birth, and then also safe sleep, all those things. So next, looking at the other end of the life cycle, our chronic diseases. So we want all people in Forsyth County to live a long and healthy life. So these are some of the programs that we have, our Minority Diabetes Prevention Program. We have community nutritionists, Be Healthy Kids, working with the school systems, our Men's Health Program. And this is a small snapshot of the programs that are focused on these chronic diseases, diabetes, heart disease, high blood pressure that affect so many people in our community. Next, transitioning into behavioral health. So, you know, the vision is individuals and families, all individuals and families in Forsyth, with a substance use disorder will receive person-centered care. And so I was talking with Denise Price just earlier today, updating these slides. She is over Behavioral Health Services here at the HHS campus with the county. And, you know, she could talk at length about this, but just some of the updates, because again, this is not just the health department's community health assessment, it's the whole community's assessment. So it's working with behavioral health, working with DSS, working with other city-county agencies, nonprofits, and everyone. But you know about the $38 million in opioid settlement funds that they're administering, and, you know, that's what they're doing, and that's over, I believe, the next 18 years that they're working to implement and provide funding for agencies. And the other one related to the work that Denise and her team are doing is mental health and making sure that people in Forsyth County, all people live in communities that support and foster a positive mental health. And you can see that suicide awareness prevention, her team, along with persons from the health department and other agencies are part of the Our State, Our Wellness statewide coalition, and then another coalition is called Forsyth Focused. And both are working to identify and implement strategies that reduce death by suicide. So, and there's also these quarterly suicide conversations. I've been to some of those where behavioral health partners, other agencies are there, really to reduce stigma and ultimately to reduce deaths by suicide. And last, definitely not least, is youth violence. Want to make sure that persons living in Forsyth County live in communities that are safe and free from violence. So we have our Cure Violence Global Model. I know you, Ms. Robinson, give updates on that in December. But this model, Forsyth Wins, Winston-Salem Interventions for Nonviolent Streets, for the city, county, or partnering, you know, we're working through Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods to implement this, to try at the person-to-person level, not policy necessarily, but person-to-person intervene to prevent violence. So I will, before I ask for questions, I will just say, privileged to work with a lot of great people, and we can't do this alone. Like I said, this is many agencies, it's not this health department, it's many agencies. And it takes all the partners in the community and your continued support. We appreciate that. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy.
Questions for Josh. Mr. Bessie.
Thank you. In the definition of unintentional accidents, you said that you did include gun violence.
Unintentional? Yeah, that includes gun violence, overdose and some other acts of like.
So how do you separate unintentional deaths by gun violence from intentional deaths by gun violence?
That is an excellent question, and that's why I now wish I had my epidemiologist with me, and we will, I will get back, I can get that information to you.
And do you include traffic deaths in that?
Let me, I can check on that.
Thank you. Joshua, one comment. Go ahead and make that note.
Oh, yes, sir.
And the comment is on your four priorities, which I think are very important. It would be nice if we identified exactly the statistic that we hope to improve, like in the violence part is not, in the report you gave us, the summary, kind of the violence piece, the use violence piece does not show up as a particular metric that we're following what that is. So some kind of, for each, I mean, if you've got priorities you're trying to monitor and you have strategies that you have identified those in a global way, we need to know some about how they're working. And so what changes in statistics should we, not the amount, but the trend in the direction of those statistics. So the youth violence one has none. Obviously, the infant mortality is pretty, you know, pretty direct. I mean, pretty obvious what you're tracking on that, and you've got a lot of metrics on that, both in disparities and numbers, et cetera. But I think that would be helpful to kind of, so that when we come back next year, we see, well, we're making some progress. I mean, hopefully on this, I mean, we certainly, if money is something to make a difference in the opioid arena, we have, we have some serious dollars from the settlement that we're working on and we're approving programs. And I'm, I mean, if they're not working, that's, that's, that's a different problem that we need to be addressing, because we can't say, well, we have no money for these programs. We do. We need to identify good programs that work and whatever outreach it takes and whatever, whatever, it's kind of like the whatever it takes. And of course, if someone knew exactly what that whatever was, we'd have a lot fewer problems in this country. But at least, at least we need to know what those things are doing. And I think it would be helpful on an annual basis to be monitoring some things a little, I mean, you're showing those outcomes. If we've got priorities and strategies, we need to be looking at that. And I know they're, within each of these smaller areas, there are outcome measures, but it'd be nice to see how all that stuff is kind of rolling up into a specific priority measure.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. And, you know, hopefully with, and we know that with the Cure Violence or Youth Violence, we'll have that report from the Serv Center. But I agree with you, what are the, you've got outputs and outcomes, and like you said, what are those indicators that we're shooting for versus the?
Good. Other questions for Joshua or comments?
When you begin to think about it, the county commissioners represent people of Forsyth County in many areas. The health department represents the people in all health areas. This is a difficult question I'm about to ask, so I apologize in advance, but, you know, people talk about if we would do this, this other would happen. If we didn't do this, this wouldn't happen. For example, if you drink too much, your liver's going to suffer. If you smoke too much, who knows what's going to suffer? So the question I have doesn't require a specific answer, but overall, what are the major health needs for the people in Forsyth County in regards to the overall health, general health that we have? And the needs that we must keep in mind all the time? You know, I'm one of these people, I like to get out and jog every day. The idea being my muscles will appreciate that, my lungs will appreciate that. And I try to do what is right, but I'm not always right. It's hard to believe if that's true. But we need to, in Forsyth County specifically, need to be aware of what the problems and needs of healthcare in, as an individual in this county need to be addressed every day.
Well, thank you for that question, and I don't believe there's any one answer. It's multifaceted, meaning, yes, access to healthcare, so hospitals and clinics, you know, thankfully, more people now have Medicaid, so they have more access to healthcare. But also making sure that we have places where people can, you know, be healthy, where clean air, clean water, access to walk and go to parks, have recreation and access to healthy foods, safe places to do all of that. So there's no violence or threats of violence. So I think it's, there's so many things, you know, thankfully, we do, we have a healthy community, but just like any other community, we always have room for improvement. And again, thank you for this opportunity and thank you Chairman Martin for that input, and we'll bring back those metrics.
Thanks, Joshua. It's a pleasure to invite Ms. Chase Law, who's the CEO of the Arts Council, come forward. And Chase has been here since 2020?
Twenty twenty, yes.
Twenty twenty.
Moved in the middle of the pandemic.
And arriving right before the pandemic began. And clearly, the arts community had many challenges.
Yes.
During, during, and we have a tremendous arts community without a doubt. In fact, I watched your video, by the way, on the ARPA project, which I guess yesterday or this week.
Oh, good.
It was very, very well done. But she's going to give us, since she is leaving shortly, a little closeout on our American Rescue Plan Act, and I think introduce some of what's all that.
Yes, and I do have a speech prepared for today. So I will share a couple of things, but I really wanted to start off by just saying thank you. You have been so supportive and so generous and a great partner to the arts community and the Arts Council for many, many years, and we are grateful for that. We have done a lot over the last three years and change, and I'm really proud of those accomplishments. Again, we could not have done it without the help of Forsyth County. Every year, you've given us support through our annual special appropriations that has helped us outside of ARPA in our mission, supporting the arts and cultural sector through our general operations and being able to serve as an advocate. So that is very much appreciated and needed as we are completing our updated Special Appropriations Grant that'll be submitted soon. So I hope you'll consider continuing that support in your annual budget for us. Those funds also allow us to continue to bring the arts out into the community. We are continuing with our Parks Concert Series at Tanglewood and Triad Parks. That has been so successful over the last eight years, and so we want that to carry on. And it's been a great partnership, and it grew even more this last year with enhanced marketing, sharing with your team as well. So thank you for that. The American Rescue Plan Act funds $4.5 million. What can I say? I mean, the things that you have done over the last several years, especially with ARPA, showed that you recognize the arts as a priority in this county, and I cannot thank you enough. It allowed for incredible recovery of artists as well as arts organizations, but it also allowed us to do incredible outreach. A big part of the strategic priorities and mission of the Arts Council is using the arts to bring community together in new ways, break down barriers, respond to needs in the community through the lens of arts, culture and creativity, and those funds have allowed us to do that. We are working with organizations right now that we never would have worked with otherwise, ever, and never have. And it is opening new doors. They are sustainable projects that I think will carry on well into the future. We're able to showcase new impact. I love some of the things that Joshua was talking about in his presentation, because we are also focused on arts being a tool in health disparities. We are participating in a national project called Arts for Everybody, and it is bringing arts and wellness together to address needs in this community, especially in the communities and neighborhoods. and neighborhoods that were hit hardest by the pandemic and that typically don't have equal opportunity to healthcare. So we're helping to respond to that. Uh, and ARPA dollars are, um, helping with those projects as well. Um, we are loving seeing the projects come to life. So out of the 4.5 million, we have allocated over 4.1 million. Projects are well underway. We have the first year of ARPA under our belt, which was really great. So we've seen these projects come to life. I hope you have seen them. We're capturing them with incredible mini documentaries, um, with themes. So if you haven't seen them all, I'll be glad to share those with you guys this afternoon. I'll, I'll forward that to you. Um, and we plan to do a series of 12 to capture these projects and continue to share the impact. But monthly, we are getting incredible in, impact reports and numbers of change that is happening in this community. So it's really lovely to see the arts really paving the way for change, um, and partnering with other entities throughout Forsyth County, um, and other, um, government entities as well. Um, and so it's great, uh, to see that unfold and, and see the arts in new ways, um, and you guys did that. Hopefully, you had a chance to review the list that I shared with you prior to the holiday season, um, and we have made that public on our website and we did share that out to media networks as well. And if you have a chance, and we have events coming up, please do attend those. Um, I know at our annual meeting that'll be coming up in March, we will be showcasing those videos and talking more about ARPA, so you'll be receiving an invitation to that as well. Um, as we, as I reflect on the last three years, there have been so many things, so many accomplishments that we have had, um, during my tenure, and I'm really, really proud of those accomplishments that we've achieved with community, with our Board of Trustees and our great staff. Um, and I feel, while I'm sad and, and I have so many emotions, I've had an emotional day today, as a matter of fact, um, but it's, uh, I'm really proud and I feel like I'm leaving this organization on really strong footing, in a great financial position, um, lots of momentum. And I have with me today, Mr. Howard Upchurch. He has, um, taken the role of interim president and CEO. Um, he has been on our Board of Trustees. He's been an incredible leader in this community, uh, longstanding community member, lover of the arts, advocate for the arts, uh, and I couldn't have asked for a better person to come and join, uh, the team. Um, I have an incredible team, incredible staff. They are committed to the mission, committed to the strategic priorities, not only of what we're doing in the arts sector, but what the community really needs. And they're going to continue to, um, drive this train forward, I have no doubt, between the board and Howard and the great team I have. Um, I do want to thank you again. Um, we can't do this alone, we're all in it together. And Dudley, I want to thank you for your leadership and your team. Uh, they've been great. Uh, you, you, we've all been through a lot, uh, the last three years, but especially with ARPA, we were all learning as we go, and you've been very supportive in that and helping us understand compliance and really make sure we're all staying the course. So thank you for that. Um, but again, it, it takes a village, it really does, and, um, we all want the same thing. We want this county to be a great place to live, work and play, and I think we're doing that. So thank you. Any questions?
Eight, time and place of the annual Arts Council meeting in March.
Um, I believe it's scheduled for March 19th. March 19th, and it will be at the Milton Road Center for the Arts, um, and an invitation will be forthcoming. So I hope you can join us.
And anybody can attend?
Anybody can attend, yes. It is open. We want, we want you to come and enjoy and celebrate the arts.
Any other comments for, uh, Chase?
Yes.
Chase, I would just like to say thank you for our, just being open, creative and innovative. And I will tell you, Howard, you've got some very tall heels to follow. But thank you so very much. I have watched you be in our community and do those phenomenal things, and we're definitely waiting for Howard to continue that work. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that, yes.
Chair Martin, if I may, um, Chase, I would just like to say it has been a pleasure getting to know you and I consider you, um, a friend by way of, um, our introduction through the Arts Council. So the Arts Council is definitely a conduit of, um, just good relationships in our community. And if it was not for your leadership, we could not have even celebrated 50 years of hip hop in 2023. And, um, that was such a unifying event, um, at the, um, Haynes brand. I mean, every walk of life, um, was there and could celebrate something, um, that is unique to, um, a, a national, um, perspective in, in arts and music. So thank you so much for your service here in Forsyth County. Good luck to you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions?
I'll, I'll just close by saying thank you also, uh, for your, your energy during this, uh, you know, challenging time, and, and you have done an outstanding job. We wish you well, as you, we hate, really do hate to see you go. I, I've read the announcement, but I, in fact, I actually appreciate it, getting a, a day notice on it, but I, I really, uh, uh, we, we really, I, I hate to read that. But I also appreciate what you've given us in a short period of time, and I think you are leaving things in, in a very good place. And, uh, Howard, thank you and congratulations and appreciate your, I, I agree with Commissioner McDaniel, um, uh, big shoes to fill and, uh, so thank you very much and we wish you well. And I'm, I'm very happy that you're going to be close to your daughter. That's a great, I, I enjoyed reading that and saying, well, that helps make all that click, so thank you.
Well, thank you so much. A piece of, of this place will always be with me, uh, and I will leave a piece of my heart here too. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Citizens who are interested in participating in the public session portion of the meeting, um, you may call, those of you that want to call in on the phone, 336-422-1200. Again, 336-422-1200. You will be placed on hold until the public session begins. And members of the audience who are interested in participating in the public session portion of the meeting, you do need to have filled out a card, um, they're outside on a little credenza, or you can get one from our clerk even now. Um, we'd be happy to hear from you on that. We do have two public hearings today. You do not need to fill out anything to speak in the public hearing. So, um, speaking of, the first item of the agenda is a public hearing on the zoning petition of Caden Holdings from, um, AG to LIL, zoning docket F-1635. And Chris Murphy, um, our Planning and Development Services Director is going to give us a brief overview, and then we'll start the hearing.
Good afternoon, members of county commissioners. This is a request, uh, this is case F-1635, and it is a request of Cade Six Holdings LLC for an approximately 10 acre, um, piece of property on the west side of NC-66, just north of Creekwood Forest Drive. And the request is special use limited or no site plan, rezoning from AG to limited Limited use. Let me get that out of the way a little bit. This is the subject property shown on the countywide legacy growth management area plan. It is located within the GMA four future growth area there along NC-66, uh, close to, uh, the southeastern corner of Forsyth County and across the road from some property, uh, that is, uh, within the town, uh, city limits of the city of High Point. This is the subject property highlighted in yellow. Again, you see there on the, uh, west side of NC-66 and the High Point jurisdiction that is zoned industrial is, uh, this area here where my mouse is, um, currently swirling. Again, the subject property is currently, uh, zoned AG, but it does have a commercial use that's been on it for a number of years. It was a nursing care institution that I believe has been closed for at least 10 years. This is the subject property, uh, outlined in yellow on the countywide aerial imagery. Again, you see, uh, the existing property, uh, this is the existing nursing care institution that, uh, is closed. This is NC-66. This is the, uh, Ralph Lauren, uh, Distribution Center, um, that is located within the High Point jurisdiction, again, zoned industrial. This is the subject property shown on the southeast Forsyth County area plan update, which was completed in the 20 teens. It does recognize at the time the, uh, use of the property as an institutional, public type use of a nursing care institution. But a nursing care institution, again, in and of itself, does have a commercial component to it, but the area plan recognized that institutional use and did not recommend any change. Again, you do notice the industrial area shown within the High Point city limits there on the southeast side of 66, kind of across from the subject property. Uh, this is looking north along NC-66, the subject property is to the left on this image. Now, this is looking south along 66, the subject property is to the right. This is looking at the subject property from 66. Again, it's, it was a nursing care institution, it's my understanding it's been vacant for a number of years. Uh, this is looking across, uh, NC-66 towards the southeast from the subject property. Uh, you do see there in the background, towards the right side of the image, the Ralph Lauren Industrial Warehousing and Distribution Facility, uh, there across in the background from the subject property. In summary, uh, we consider the request consistent with the recommendations of the Southeast Forsyth County Area Plan Update in Legacy 2030. Again, it, it was a non-residential use, it was a, uh, institutional and public use, but the proposed district, uh, we feel like is compatible with the surrounding residential, agricultural and industrial land uses because they have requested a limited use with some conditions. They have requested, uh, to limit their use to LIL for the use services B and have further agreed to limit that to the subuses of SIC code 734 and 735, which are, uh, services to other dwellings and businesses, and that's the lawn care operation. And also 735 equipment rental and leasing, because again, I believe similar to lots of other type operations like that, they might want to, uh, rent out a plugger or, uh, some other type of equipment for folks to go and take care of their lawn as well. Uh, and the use nursery, lawn and garden supply store retail, because they do want to sell, uh, some plants and materials and other things commonly associated with landscaping. They've also agreed to a signage condition that is before you there, and all of that has been, um, the signed and notarized in the written consented conditions, and we did send that updated version of that that further limited the use services B earlier this week. So with that, the recommendation, this was heard by the planning board at their December 14th, 2023 public hearing, there were no speakers in opposition, and following the public hearing, the planning board did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the request. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chris? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing and speakers will have up to 15 minutes, the speak, total, to speak in favor of this request, up to 15 minutes total to speak in opposition. Um, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? I declare the public hearing closed. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman? No. I move that zoning map amendment F-1635 be approved on the basis of the following. The proposed general use zoning map amendment is petitioned by Cade Six Holdings LLC to rezone a 10.01 acre piece of property from AG Agricultural to LIL, services B with use is limited to SIC 734, services dwellings and other buildings in SIC 735, equipment rental and leasing with outside storage equipment and nursery, lawn and garden supply store retail is consistent with the recommendations of the legacy comprehensive plan and reasonable or in the public interest because, one, the subject property consisting of a vacant commercial building previously used as a nursery care facility located at 2680 NC-66 South is currently zoned AG and is adjacent to properties zoned AG and RS-20 with uses consisting of single family houses and agricultural uses and near properties with industrial zoning and uses. Two, the proposed LIL zoning is intended to accommodate limited manufacturing, wholesaling, warehousing, research and development and related commercial and service activities which have little or no adverse impact upon adjoining properties in order to provide locations for industrial development and growth management areas one, two, three and four. Three, the subject property is located in growth management area four, and the proposed LIL zoning would allow services to dwellings and other buildings, equipment rental, a nursery, lawn and s- garden supply store and retail. And four, the proposed LIL is consistent with the Southeast Forsyth County Area Plan Update, which recommends institutional use for this site, which was based upon a use that has been abandoned, and the area plan update encourages consolidation of industrial uses and intensification of use in this area, and the proposed zoning is consistent with the lega- legacy comprehensive plan, which encourages reuse of vacant commercial sites, and the proposed use is consistent with proximate zoning and surrounding uses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, uh, Commissioner Linville. Uh, any further discussion? Hold in favor, uh, please hold up your hand. We see you, Ms. Wizner. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Um, the second item on the agenda is a public hearing on the zoning petition of Ram Real Estate from RS-30 and RS-40 to limited business special zoning docket F-1636. Again, Chris Murphy, our Development, Planning and Development Services Director, will give a brief overview of the request.
Again, good afternoon. Uh, this is a request, this case F-1636 of Ram Real Estate for, uh, a rezoning of 2.12 acres on the, um, east side of Germanton Road between Irene Lane and Oak Trail Lane. And the request is to go from, uh, RS-30 and RS-40 to, uh, LBS or limited business special use. Uh, this is the subject property shown on the countywide, um, growth management area plan. Uh, you do see that the subject property is shown in GMA five or the rural area. This is the subject property, uh, highlighted in yellow. Again, it is on the east side of NC-66, uh, on the south side of Irene Lane and, um, just north of the interchange with the, uh, northern Beltway. And I think I said NC-66, but it's Germanton Road, excuse me. Uh, again, the subject property outlined in yellow on the countywide aerial imagery. Again, you do see, this is along Highway eight or Germanton Road. You see the extent of, uh, where the, uh, Beltway work was done. Again, um, Irene Lane, which is a, a, a less than stellar road at this point, but as part of this proposal, they are proposing to bring that up to a higher public street standard. But again, this is on the east side of Germanton Road, just north of the Beltway. Uh, this is the subject property shown on the Rural Hall Area Plan Update, which was done in the 20 teens. Again, it shows the subject property recommended for residential, um, land uses. This is just a number of images, uh, looking, uh, nearer the site. Uh, if the, the, the top image there is looking, uh, across, um, Highway eight, the, uh, image on the, uh, south, uh, excuse me, in the bottom left corner is, uh, looking south along Highway eight, and the image in the bottom right corner is looking north along Highway eight. Again, the subject property would be on the right of that image. Uh, this is looking east into the subject property from Highway eight. Uh, that's where the proposed, uh, building would be located. Uh, this is looking northeast and east at the neighboring residential properties, and that shows Irene Lane, which is currently a gravel road, um, that traverses that northern portion of the subject property. Uh, this is the proposed site plan. Uh, well, it was the proposed site plan. Uh, this is, uh, the subject property, this is proposed to be a retail store, I believe, you know, at this point, it, and when we get to the, uh, images, it's, uh, proposed to be a DG Fresh, which is a type of retail store. This is, uh, Highway eight or Germanton Road. This is the, this is Irene Lane. It shows the access into the parking lot of the site coming off of Irene Lane, uh, again, shown for, uh, improvements to public street standards. Uh, again, landscaping, um, buffering, et cetera, uh, with the, uh, building proposed sort of in the, uh, bottom, uh, right or eastern portion of the subject property with parking in between the building and the streets. Uh, these are the elevations that were submitted as part of the petition. The elevations do meet the retail store requirements and the ordinance, uh, and are made of materials such as brick, hardy plank and those kind of things. And somehow, this condition always And somehow, this condition always, I thought I actually eliminated this slide, but they have agreed to these conditions. There was a a standard that was not met dealing with screening of the rooftop HVAC, which is a requirement, but we wanted to make sure we got that in there, and that is on your signed written consented conditions, but this was put in there as part of the planning board presentation and was not removed, and actually, I thought I deleted it earlier, but perhaps I didn't save the PowerPoint. In looking at the request and looking at the summary of the request, staff felt was inconsistent with the recommendations of the Rural Hall Area Plan Update and Legacy 2030. The request is not within the sewer, serviceable land area for Forsyth County at this point. It's located within GMA 5. There's no commercial zoning located within a quarter mile of the subject property. The request, as proposed, allows suburban development patterns to encroach into the rural area of Forsyth County. This was heard at the planning board at their December 14th, 2023 public hearing. There were no speakers in opposition, and then following the public hearing and discussion, the planning board did vote to recommend denial by a vote of five to two. The predominant thought on the planning board was that the request was premature until forward 2045 is complete and the parcel-specific recommendations have been updated. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions, but before I do, I'm going to turn it over to Gordon, who wanted to speak briefly about spot zoning.
Thank you, Chris. Members of the board, as you know, we were asked, the county attorney's office was asked to review this to determine whether it would be an illegal spot zone, and as the facts were summarized by Chris, you have a roughly two-acre lot, which is surrounded by residential uses, and because it's a relatively small lot, which would have a 10,710 square foot commercial building placed on it, it was our conclusion that it would likely be considered an illegal spot zone.
Any questions for Chris or Gordon? All righty. This is a public hearing, and speakers will have up to 15 minutes total to speak in favor of this request, and up to 15 minutes total to speak in opposition. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? And we do have 15 minutes available, and if there are several speakers, I'll just ask you to try to be concise in case there are others, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Amanda Hodiern, 804 Green Valley Road, Suite 200 in Greensboro. I'm here this afternoon on behalf of the property owner and also the would-be developer that's presented the proposal that you've seen and heard about. That's Terramore Development. Terramore Development is a preferred developer for the DG Fresh retail store that you've heard about and that we'll be speaking more about today, so that's how that all stacks up and who's who on the roster. If I may approach, I have a couple items to aid in my discussion points.
Just give it to Kirk, it'd be perfect.
I have with me here this afternoon our civil engineer, Mr. Justin Church. Just mention that in case you have any questions, so you'll know that he's here at your disposal. Also have with me Daniel Almazan of Terramore Development, who also is going to speak, so I'm going to try to make my comments brief to leave some time for him. And you can flip through this at your leisure. There, I will note, the elevation rendering has changed. Daniel's going to speak to that, so just disregard that one for now. He'll talk about why and show you what's different, but everything else, we're going to touch on here. So the first things I want to note, as you've heard from Mr. Murphy, the request, of course, is for LB special use, and that special use is the site plan that you see before you now, that you've reviewed in your packet, and that has gone through TRC review. And I want to highlight and lift that up, because that represents a significant curtailment and restriction on what's being asked for here and what could happen. Limited business as you know it in your ordinance, of course, can mean a lot of things out of a variety of square footages, some of which could be rather intense, but this is not that. This is limited through your special use provisions and your site plan-specific application process, and that's what we've availed ourselves to in this application, meaning, put simply, the only thing that could happen here if approved is exactly what you see before you, only the site plan that you see, the size that you see, and the elevations that you see and that we're asking you to request. So when you look at it in that regard, I want us to think about how specific this is. It's a very specific set of restrictions and conditions that are placed here, more so than would be placed on a byright development that could develop today and just come in as already zoned. That would not have a specific site plan, it would not have the transparency and predictability that this request asks for, and that's important here, because we understand it needs to be surgical and intentional and deliberate. Not all commercial developments would be appropriate here, we recognize that, and we put forth one that I suggest to you and hope you will agree is appropriate. That's important, because of course, one of the significant factors of your analysis does need to be, how does this shake out against your comprehensive planning guidance? How does this look under the Legacy 2030 plan? You've heard from Mr. Murphy, this is growth management area 5. It's not considered generally consistent right now, under staff's analysis, largely for the reason that it is not serviceable by sewer. This basin can't be serviced by sewer, and that leads staff to really have to think about the fact that it's not going to have a huge explosion of population growth in terms of a lot of high-density residential and that sort of thing. So we have to think about that, and we have to think about the fact that we also have a significant changed condition here. The Beltway has opened up just south of the site, and that's what this map is about. That's what I wanted to show you here. This is a very wide shot, of course, and it's done that way intentionally. So you see the interstate crossing across the south of the site. This is just due north from Winston-Salem proper. And what's very important here is that this is an interchange. So we're not just at the shadow of the new Beltway, the only interchange that you see in this whole shot of map. So what that means is that folks are going to have to travel here on Germanton Road to get on and off that new major travel corridor represented by I-74. So that gives us a very good opportunity here to meet people where they already are, to serve them with some goods and services that they already need, and to capture them in a place where we don't have to ask them to make an extra trip or go out of their way. They're already going to be here. Infrastructure is made by the state, the city, the county. Those infrastructure expenditures are already at this location, so what we want to do is be in keeping with that. So I know your comprehensive plan is under review, that'll come up for a new plan looking ahead to 2045. This is certainly a changed condition that will inform that. Mr. Murphy and I have talked about that, and the fact that it can't be serviced by sewer is not a problem for this user or this application. This user wants to serve what's here now. They want to serve the existing population. This isn't about trying to create a new critical mass or a new center or a destination. It's about providing necessary goods and services to what's already here and bringing it to people at a convenient place where they already have to drive by. If I quickly could address the spot zoning analysis from your county attorney, I would respectfully submit a counter opinion. We do have a dispositive test from our court system under the Crispin case from 1988 that's been codified now in 160D that tells us that size is not the dispositive factor. It can be a part of your analysis, but it is not a cut-and-dry, black-and-white analysis. What that test asks us to look at is reasonableness and a balancing of interests. Is there a public benefit to be served here? Is there a reasonable determination that the folks in your position can make that this zoning request serves the area for a public benefit? And I would suggest to you that the answer is yes. This, by following one of the policy guidances of your comprehensive plan that asks us to place commercial rural development in appropriate rural locations, that's exactly what this is doing. So we're not asking to put it somewhere way out where people aren't going. We're not asking you to put a custom sneaker shop here or a Costco. We're asking you to put something that people already need, that they already want, in an appropriate location, because they already have to be here, in a location that doesn't need the area to grow or become something that it's not already. This user likes this location for what it is today, and that's how we think we can serve this area and be a public benefit to help you on that spot zoning analysis. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to my client, who wants to talk specifically about the site plan.
Good afternoon. My name's Daniel Almazan. I do site acquisition for Terramore Development, and I'm also the general contractor of record for the North Carolina branch. As Amanda was sharing with you, we are a preferred developer for Dollar General, and as part of their internal restructuring, they actually are taking these new formats and becoming mini-markets. And so DG Fresh actually is being even more expanded to where that they are small grocery stores. Their emphasis on fresh produce and vegetables, as well as expanded coolers. So you get sort of all these type of grocery store, but they still have the health and beauty aid, cleaning products, housewares that they normally carry. You know, we've been working on this project for about a year, and I had the opportunity to do a community meeting and meet a lot of neighbors in the process. One individual who wasn't, unfortunately, he texted today, he was sick, William Landrum, who lives across the street, he had reached out to me a couple of times about some things that we talked about in the Zoom meeting that we did, and it kind of hit home in terms of a couple of things that Amanda brought up as well, is context. Context for him was that they had several people in the community that were concerned about Germanton Road. There's a hill that's farther up, people obviously are coming down there, and we can expect traffic to increase now that we have the bypass there. And so for him, he was worried about what it was going to do to the street, and something that doesn't show up in the application plan is that we had already worked with NC DOT review, and we are widening Germanton Road, or that would be the plan, the expectation is to put in a turn lane. And so that was going to help kind of alleviate some of that, because there's a private road that's across the street that, again, doesn't show up on your plan. You know, something else that I was fortunate, I saw Ms. Summers, who's one of the community members, and I realize not always people from the community want to speak, but if you raise your hand, I think we've got some people who are in support of the project as well. A lot of times what happens is that you get this silent majority who looks for an opportunity that can support a project, and a project like this can actually support the community. And that's why we look at this as a good fit, as something that we need to look into context, just like Amanda said. We looked at this in terms of a multi-use project, because actually, as we originally subjected this, am I out of time?
No, you have, I get a five-minute note.
Okay, okay.
There's five minutes left, and if there's anybody else, is there anyone else who wants to speak? Just want to make sure in the favor of, in favor of, simply because I'm trying, we're just managing time.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Got 4:42 left.
Okay. When, in one of the packets that you sent, and something that was discussed with the community was, was that this is a 16-acre tract, and we originally looked at this as having housing, single-family housing in the back, and this being a supportive service at the front of it. And so whenever we submitted that to staff, they looked at this, and they just said that their zoning qualifications don't really fit for that, and so they asked us to go back to the drawing and redo the plan and just submit it for this. And so again, it looks like we're only looking at this small piece, even though we did have in mind a larger scope. The other thing that was important was that during that process, as we had to allow for greater right-of-way dedication for Irene Lane, some of the site plan changed, and what we put in that package is a change in the facade, that's correct. And we're having to do that, because originally, we had a corner facade, but as we lost space and it changed the configuration of the parking lot, we can't have people entering where there's no sidewalks, so unfortunately, we had to change that. And so I submit that to you, because obviously, this is a conditional use, and I need to be specific about what conditions that we were offering. And just in case, I've got Justin Church here, who's our engineer, and I'll give him the opportunity for a little bit of time in case that there were some additional questions, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have to make.
So this is the elevation, this is what it looks like?
That's correct.
Kind of the final piece, with parking that shows up like?
Yeah, the site plan is correct now. Oh, actually, not that, in your original?
This part is correct?
Yes, except for, I'm sorry, that was the original?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. What is on the site plan of the application is the correct.
Okay, all right.
That is the right site plan.
Got it.
Okay.
What's on the overhead is what is being proposed.
That's correct.
All right, we have two minutes left.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, just to sort of summarize, I know we've thrown a lot of information at you quickly. I'd like to conclude by inviting you to consider this request as sort of the tried-and-true traditional land use pattern plan of a rural outpost. That's something that we've done to serve our communities for a long time, and it's not something that doesn't still ring true, and we know that from the Legacy 2030 guidance to put commercial rural development where it makes sense. And I think that this case does that. I think that we've been thoughtful and deliberate about it, to not be too big, to not be too expansive, to try to be something that this area doesn't need, but to be a surgical and precise provision of the goods and services that people already need for the people who already live here and travel by this exact location. And we are here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. One minute left. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? All righty. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All righty. I declare that the public hearing is closed. Be happy to, are there any questions before there's a motion? Any clarifications based on the material that we received? I did want to ask one quick thing, just to make sure I'm right. At least from your outward appearance and design, these two are very different. So I assume this is the correct one, and it's going to reflect exactly the drawing that was submitted with the plan.
Thank you.
Got it. Any other questions for?
Chairman, yes, I do have a few questions. First of all, what I'd like to address, and you did try to address it just a little bit, but I would like to know how you plan on being a good partner other than a retail space for the community. My second question is, I see that there's some constituents in the building that appear to be in support of this. I need to know where they live, yeah, in the subject area. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. I'll let Mr. Almazan speak to the property owner addresses. I think he knows more about that. But in regards to your first question, thank you for the opportunity to talk about that more. In addition to just, you know, providing something that we feel the community needs, and we hope will make their daily life more convenient, I think that a development like this also offers an opportunity to further the infrastructure opportunities that are available here. And Mr. Almazan touched on this a little bit, but you've heard from Mr. Murphy, these are DOT roads. So that means that there is a very specific and prescribed process of how they have to be improved to do something like this. So in this case, that directly aids and impacts the community by widening Irene Lane, actually, you know, upgrading it to a paved surface, for one thing, widening it, enhancing it to a facility that can serve the rear of this property, the balance of the property that is as yet undeveloped. So for whoever comes along, whether it be my client or somebody else, as that property is accessed and eventually can become new homes for folks to live in, now they have a nice facility to drive on to get there, and they don't have to have individual curb cuts on a main road or come through somebody else's driveway with easements, as we often see in these rural areas. Also, Germanton Road itself is being widened here with a turn lane. So as the public comes through and contends with perhaps a new development, it's not something they're going to have to stop and wait for folks to turn in on. So I would submit that this also helps the community by, you know, covering its own traffic impacts in that regard and leaving the situation a little better than they found it in serving the area. I'll let Mr. Almazan come up. He might have more to add to that.
A couple of things to just add on to. A couple of things to just add on to, in terms of the community, things, and actually, I guess I need to speak more for Dollar General in that aspect, even though we're the developer, they're the tenant. Dollar General is a major contributor to literacy, but more specifically for the local community, there's, you're looking at about 10 to 12 additional part and full-time jobs. Those jobs also come with scholarship opportunities. They come with family assistant opportunities. See, I know that they're also heavily committed for Veterans Affairs, you know. And so that's just some of the things that I can speak to. But again, I'm not a representative of Dollar General. They are a tenant. And then, let's see, Ms. Summers, she could probably tell you her address if you need clarification on that.
If someone can help me figure out where they live on this, in this subject area.
I don't know.
Yeah, Ms. Summers, would you want to just come speak just very briefly? Just have to tell us where you, we're just like, we're just curious where you live in relation to the proposed store. We're not going to quiz you on a thousand things. So it's not, not that, it just, I think to answer Commissioner McDaniel's question, just like to know where you live relative to this. I mean, are you a football field away, a couple of football, are you on Germanton Road, kind of where you live?
Could you help? Yeah.
Right here. And you don't have to operate the computers either. You can tell us your address and.
You know, like the vicinity.
Looks like Mr. Murphy's getting in the location here.
She lives at 1001 Ridge Avenue. It must be somewhere Rich.
Yeah.
Must be somewhere in the vicinity, but I don't see it. But she has family all around there, too.
Yeah, yeah. No, specific to this site, so Rich is how far from the site in question? That's what I need to know. Thank you. I appreciate you being here.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Chairman Martin, I do have a question. Maybe, this is not probably too fair to Mr. Almazan, but you kind of opened up that can of worms around, sharing with us the good works of Dollar General that, I'll be honest with you, as a public school educator, I've just not heard before that Dollar General was in the literacy field as it relates to supporting literacy. But that does not mean that, you know, that's just a one-off that I don't know about. So I was interested in how locally Dollar General, or maybe statewide, national, Dollar General is promoting literacy. And I'll assume it's public school-based. And if you can't answer that question, that is fine if you're not comfortable, and maybe, yeah. Sound like you had some other kind of public service support, not you, but Dollar General, which I commend them for. I will say, well, I'll just, I do have one other question for you other than Dollar General. So it sounded like you, as the developer, or maybe Dollar General, had a meeting with the community to get some input or feedback. And if that is true, was there any kind of sign in? Did you take any feedback from the community members around if this was something they wanted to have in their community?
After we did the original community meeting, and that was back in the spring, I believe, actually, that was March of last year, when we did a quarter of a mile radius around the property. And typically, you know, we end up having to do a wide net because we, we did a Zoom call because unlike some locations where that, thank you, unlike some locations where that we've got a common, a church or a school or something that we can all congregate at, it was just easier to conduct a Zoom meeting. And so we had seven people participate, which it is what it is, but being on the board, you're probably used to having opposition gladly sign up and let their grievances be known. We actually had a lot more people that were excited, just they wanted to know when it might be coming available. And so it's been a long process in terms of us weeding out what we would do to the site requirements, you know, having to do with staff requirements. Literacy? While I can't speak for what they do specifically, because really, you want to know, I want to know, what are you doing in my backyard? And probably not enough. I mean, like, that's the truth, you know. And I think unfortunately, we see that in a lot of large companies where that they don't necessarily, they don't focus enough on the immediate communities that they serve. And thanks.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions. I'll just save my, once we go into discussion.
Mr. Murphy, Chris, actually, Commissioner Bessie asked me, I'm sorry, could you repeat the address?
Mr. Chairman.
No, no, hang on, just one second, Commissioner Wizen. He just asked me a question about what the address was. I actually did not hear it well. Is it Rich Road? R-I-C-H?
Rich. R-I-C-H is my understanding is what she said. 1100 Rich.
Any other questions? Are we ready to entertain a motion? Just another question? Excuse me.
To follow up on the address, 1001 Rich Avenue in Rural Hall? It doesn't, it doesn't show up, the only 1001 Rich Avenue that pops up on my map is in Winston-Salem off of New Walkertown Road, and that surely is not the one you're telling us. Is that, you know, an address near New Walkertown Road? Is that where we're talking about? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. We also have.
Okay, all right, thank you. But that actually is correct. Your address is near Old New Walkertown Road. Thank you very much. It's not anywhere near here.
Right. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner?
Chris, any, coming from the north on eight, heading south on in toward Winston, any, I believe you said sometime in the recent past about turning lanes that I've asked questions about, the DOT, if there's turn lanes needed, they're the ones that makes that decision. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
All righty. Are we ready for a motion now? Of approval, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Wizen.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve zoning map amendment F-1636. I know that the zoning map amendment F-1636 be approved on the basis of the following. The proposed special use zoning map amendment, as petitioned by Real Estate LLC to rezone a 2.12 acre piece of property from RS40 residential single-family, 40,000 square foot minimum lot size, and RS30 residential single-family, 30,000 square foot minimum lot size, to LBS limited business special use retail store is inconsistent with the recommendation of the legacy comprehensive plan, but is reasonable and in the public interest because the subject property consists of undeveloped land located at the east side of Germanton Road between Irene Line and Oak Trail Line, and is surrounded by lands owned RS40 and RS30, with uses being single-family houses and undeveloped land with some commercial uses in the vicinity. The subject property is located near a highway interchange with the new northern Beltway. LBS zoning is primarily intended to accommodate moderately intense neighborhood shopping and service centers close to residential areas and to serve as a transition between residential districts and other commercial districts, and is intended for application in growth management areas two, three, four, and five. The subject property is located in the growth management area five. The proposed LBS zoning and the proposed use of the 10,710 square foot retail store would be inconsistent with the Rural Hall area plan update, which recommends single-family residential development. It would be inconsistent with the legacy comprehensive plan, which seeks to protect residential areas from commercial encroachment, and the use would be inconsistent with immediately surrounding uses. The proposed rezoning would represent a use consistent with the new highway interchange and would represent a transition from residential to the commercial uses that will likely develop around the interchange. And the proposed use would provide services to the surrounding residential areas. And this approval is deemed an amendment to the legacy comprehensive plan.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I can back Commissioner Level. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to speak against the motion. We've seen here essentially the presentation that was made to the zoning, the planning board, which voted five to two to deny the petition on essentially grounds that it was inconsistent with the existing plans, that the consideration that the planning could be changed because of the Beltway and the anticipated nearby interchange was premature, was jumping over the process of considering whether it's appropriate to modify the specific plans and uses recommended for the area to be commercial in nature. And it's really getting the cart before the horse for us to assume that that's going to happen at this point. I will vote no on the motion, and if the motion fails to pass, I will make an alternative motion to deny the zoning map amendment.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, can I just bring Mr. Almazan up? And I need to seek clarification on one thing.
All right.
Something he's presented. And this speaks to what Mr. Almazan was talking about, but the location of the building changed, and they did not submit revised elevations. If you notice, these elevations are of a corner building with the entrance being on the corner. The exhibit that he submitted that is at your place has a storefront that is in the middle of the building, and that's what the elevations reflect. I just want to have Mr. Almazan on record being that this is the elevations as compared to what was originally submitted. So if I could just have Mr. Almazan confirm that.
Sure. That is correct. The packet that I handed out is the rendering, so that you know what it actually looks like, the elevations for it. And also to further clarify, because what was originally submitted showed the completed facade on three sides, and it will stay consistent with that because I realized that the elevations that we had on there, it only shows two sides faced. And so I needed that added into record that I realized that it was a engineering change. And so we're trying to be proactive in having this ready for this meeting, and so we're just making the corrections as we needed to.
But the previous slide, Chris, the previous slide, which is the footprint of the?
That is correct.
Foundation plane.
Yeah.
That part is correct.
That's correct.
It's the orientation of where the main entrance is going to be.
That had to be changed.
And the signage, Dollar Store.
Exactly.
Is from an appearance standpoint. That's why I was asking about, is that picture the correct picture?
That is correct.
But the plant, it will be built on that pad.
That's correct.
If, I guess, all right. Okay. I think we're ready to vote. Any other comments? All in favor, please hold up your hand, please.
This is the vote on Mrs. Wizenhut's?
Yes, we're voting on Mrs. Wizenhut's motion. Those that oppose, please hold up your hand. Motion carries four to three. All righty. The next item on the agenda is a resolution extending a recruitment and retention bonus program for law enforcement detention center staff with the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. I think we've discussed this several times. Is there a motion? Motion from Commissioner Bessie. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Next item on the agenda is an approval of the minutes for the meeting of January 8, 2024. Motion by Commissioner Plyler. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any calls or cards for the public session?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have any cards or callers today.
All righty, very good. Thank you. Our county manager. I think we are ready to continue with the remainder of the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Martin. Good afternoon, board members and staff and guests. We do have some business items for consideration this afternoon. We have reviewed these in briefing sessions and have hopefully answered all of your questions, so I'll go ahead and dive into it. On the agenda, item six is an amendment to the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget ordinance. It appropriates $150,000 from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services for mosquito. Addendum nine, 10 hurricane preparedness mosquito control. We do have, I believe, Ryan Harrison here? Where's Ryan?
Just stepped out.
He just stepped out. Okay, and here's Ryan Harrison. All right. There was a question that Commissioner Bessie had asked, I think specifically around the chemicals that are used in the fogging systems that would be part and parcel of this, Ryan. So if you can give them a quick snapshot of what that is, that'd be great. And thank you for your work out there.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I always really appreciate it. So my name's Ryan Harrison. I've been with the county 27 years now. I do vector control, and I'm going to have to move pretty quickly. It's a pretty complicated situation. So the way we use our pesticides, we do integrated mosquito management. And what that means is we do surveillance in order to prevent us having to use adulticides. Adulticides are what people see when they see a spray truck or something like that driving down the road. So we do everything we can possibly do to not use these types of pesticides. We do that through education. We try to treat, teach people how to prevent mosquito breeding sites or prevent breeding or mosquito bites when the mosquitoes are actually out there. So we use biological larvicides. These are the safest thing that we have in our toolbox. We do answer some minimal complaints, but not very much anymore. And adulticides, like I said earlier, are always the last resort of what we want to do. And we only do that when we have West Nile positives or we have mosquitoes that are testing positives or human cases. So what we don't do is we do not do backyard spraying. We do not do spray routes. We don't just drive around neighborhoods and spray these pesticides. And we do not treat for nuisance mosquitoes at all. So our larvicides, they rapidly degrade in sunlight. Altacid in itself is listed to be used in drinking water. This is our first product. And this is by the World Health Organization. It's slightly toxic to some fish and some crayfish species, but that's only in levels that are 1,000 times or 10,000 times what we would normally apply. So we usually use this in swimming pools or places that don't have any freshwater convenience. They don't go in any creeks or anything like that. So we also use. So we also use Elsphericus. Um, this is an organic pesticide. This can be used on any crop in the country, um, in, in places where mosquitoes are breeding around those clo- crops. Um, this only kills mosquitoes. It doesn't have any harmful effects on anything else. Um, drain flies and black flies are in that, that, uh, uh, species list that they affect. Bacillus thuringensis is another naturally occurring bacterium, um, and this is labeled for use, uh, in human drinking water as well, according to the World Health Organization. And, um, once again, this product only kills mosquitoes, drain flies, and black flies. Adulticideing is something we don't like to do. It's our very last resort. So when I do adulticideing, I answer to FIFRA, which is the Federal Insecticide, Fungicide and Rhodent- Rhodenticide Act, the EPA, um, the Federal Department of Wildlife, um, which is, uh, US Fish and Wildlife, the CDC, and the state. Um, they all have access to my data, and we all have to, uh, give them good data, and, uh, um, anytime they want to see what we're doing, we have to supply it with them. Um, our equipment is calibrated yearly by the manufacturers. They come out, we go out in the field, and we calibrate and make sure everything is running at perfect standards. Um, and once again, adulticideing is always our last resort, and that ULV, I'm gonna talk about that down at the bottom. Um, now, we have Beekeeper alarms now. We have a GPI mapping software, and you can look at these little red areas, those are buffer zones. Um, when we're driving down the road at night, we have our GPS units on. If we're spraying, if we get anywhere near those buffer zones, an alarm will go off. Okay? So we know that we're over five to six hundred feet away from these beehives and these beekeepers. We also do a lot of educational work with the Beekeeper Organization. Okay? We go and give presentations to them and explain to them how safe our pesticides actually are when they're used correctly. We do late-night applications. Why do we treat at night? Well, to avoid humans and to avoid bees. Bees do not fly at night. Um, and also with Forsyth County, we have to talk in terms of gallons instead of drums. Currently, uh, four years ago, I bought five gallons of Delta Methrin, which is the pyrethroid we use. I have three of those gallons left, so in four years, I have used a gallon of this pesticide. Currently, right now, down east, we have, uh, mosquito control units that have thirty to fifty, fifty-five gallon drums of these same products. So here in Forsyth County, we very rarely spray, and we only spray when we need to. Once again, uh, or let's talk about the label. The label is from the EPA. Those are very, very, um, strict, uh, laws. If we break that label ruling, we get fined, and I don't want Mr. Watts and I to have that conversation. Um, now, let's talk about ULV. What does that mean? Ultra-low volume. So we're using tiny, tiny amounts of these pesticides, um, over large areas, okay? And also, when we spray these adulticides, we are required by law to go out and check for any adverse effects the next day. So we do all this. Now, let's talk about the pyrethroids that we use for adulticideing. Um, like I said, uh, we answer to the EPA. The EPA has been studying these since the early sixties, so there is a tremendous amount of research on these products. Um, we use Duett. Um, it's a Sumethrin. It's a very safe pyrethroid. Um, we use one ounce per acre. So think about a shot glass full of liquid over an entire football field. Okay? So that's the science behind this, is it's all like you would give an elephant a hundred aspirin because he's so big, whereas a human would take two aspirin, while mosquitoes might take a tiny, tiny, tiny little bit of that pesticide. So that's how we stay below these toxic thresholds. We use this product because it rapidly degrades in the environment. We don't coat any vegetation. We don't do anything like the backyard sprayers do. This product goes out from behind our trucks. It rolls out about three hundred feet. It stays floating in the air, and it floats for about twenty minutes, and then, then the oil that kind of creates the bubble that allows it to float, um, it breaks, and these products start metabolizing into the environment. So in about thirty minutes, there's almost nothing left. Um, there is no deposition on any type of vegetation or anything like that. And we use Sumethrin simply because we can spray for daytime feeding mosquitoes at night with this product, okay? It's very tricky dealing with daytime feeding mosquitoes simply because they are out in the daytime, and we don't want to spray around people, and we don't want to spray around bees. And if we look over here on the right, um, this little middle, uh, uh, picture there, we can see that we actually use under point zero zero five pounds of Sumethrin per acre. So that's about ten Tylenol tablets or ten aspirin tablets worth of chemical on a football field-sized area. It's very, very safe, very, very, uh, low amount. Now, Delta Guard, um, Delta Methrin is what we use. This is a, one of the newest pesticides out there. It actually has the lowest active ingredient that is available to mosquito control people right now. Um, it's expensive, but that's why we buy it, because we can use such a small amount of it. It's very, very safe. Um, once again, Delta Guard, we take about a half an ounce of this liquid, um, and mix it with these other, uh, inert ingredients. Um, Delta Guard mixes with water, so we take a half an ounce of this, mix it with water, and we spray that, and so you're using a half an ounce of, of, of this product per acre. Um, and once again, that's about the size of a football field. And if we look over here, once again, at that, uh, middle, um, uh, graphic there, we can see that we're actually using under point zero zero one pounds per acre. So literally, I've seen that amount of this dry product, and it's like three aspirin tablets. It's tiny amounts of these products. They're very safe. They very, uh, rapidly degrade in the environment once they've done their job. Now, once they do their job, those mosquitoes can come back and fly through that area. So it's very, very tricky work. We have to time it when these mosquitoes are hatching, um, or when they're most likely to be flying, which is usually after dark. So the equipment we use to do this, um, we use a larvacidal sprayer. It's actually an old gas-powered motor. It's an eighteen horsepower, uh, motor on the back of a truck. Here's a good picture of it. Um, this is first thing in the morning after one of flooding event out on one of our greenways, okay? Um, this is an extremely efficient way to, uh, do this, use this product. Um, we use these bacteriological larvicides when we're doing this, and to give you an idea of the efficiency, when I first started twenty-five years ago and we did everything manually, it would take me four to five days to treat the entire area of all the swamps in Tanglewood. That's just Tanglewood. So I'd spend a week out at Tanglewood treating all those swamps. Currently, with these products, I can do Tanglewood in forty-five minutes to an hour and a half. So it's amazing, efficient way to do this. Um, our adulticide sprayer, the one that sprays all, uh, our pyrethroid chemicals, these, this, uh, sprayer is brand-new, state-of-the-art. It's electric. Um, it's got all the bells and whistles for safety, um, and it really, really allows us to really, really calibrate down to these super minute levels. Um, and like I said, this is part of the, uh, safety equipment that we have that will set off alarms when we're going through these buffer zones and things like that. And we also do manual treatments, um, uh, or with backpack blowers, uh, pump sprayers, and then we, uh, also treat with the BTI Donuts that I'm sure a lot of you might have seen. So we, when we're treating manually, most of our work is either in our swamps. Um, y'all may have seen some out near, uh, Lowman's Plaza. There's a bunch out there. There's one over here, uh, by WSSU. Um, there's a whole bunch of swamps in the, in the county, probably over two hundred. Um, we manage probably about, or we try to manage about fifteen of those. So another thing we do manually is our storm drain program. We've got over twenty-one thousand storm drains in the city. We've found over seven hundred of those could potentially breed mosquitoes. Um, and we treat these with biological larvicides, and we do work with the storm, uh, department, storm water department. They're aware of what we're doing. Um, and we treat these, uh, storm water drains simply because our West Nile vector is, um, found in cryptic environments. It likes to go underground where it's cool and humid, and there's always water in some of these storm drains, so it makes it very tricky. I would also like to really point out that where we treat these storm drains in the downtown area, um, with these larvicides, these are the areas that we have West Nile positive mosquitoes every single year, every single season. Um, and with that, uh, ask away. Thank you for this opportunity, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Questions? Commissioner Bessie asked this.
Thanks. If we could go back to the larvicide, uh, slide, please. Yes, um, Altacity, um, does it bioaccumulate or-
No, sir.
All right, so, um, it degrades too rapidly?
Yes, in the sunlight, it breaks down.
All right. Well, you treat storm sewers with this?
Not with that, no, sir.
No, okay.
We use that in swimming pools. They don't have it, there is no, uh, um, uh, not really any transfer of that water into our waterways.
All right. Um, and with regard to the, um, uh, the adulticides?
Mm-hmm.
Um, let's see. What effect does that have on native pollinators?
Native pollinators?
Yes.
We do not spray it when the native pollinators are out, um, and it's actually a, a misnomer, um, because mosquitoes are actually pollinators themselves. So, uh, when we spray at night, um, you know, none of these native bees are out, and none, none of our, uh, honeybees are out, none of the wasps are out or things like that.
And the habitat you're spraying is not where they, uh, would overnight then?
Well, typically, uh, when we're spraying, we're spraying in areas that are known to have huge hatches of mosquitoes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to give you an example, uh, behind Flat Rock Elementary School, um, uh, we have a tremendous mosquito problem down there where sometimes the mosquitoes are coming out, um, between fifty and a hundred in a minute. Like, as soon as you get out of your truck, there's a hundred mosquitoes on you. Um, so those are the types of areas that we, we do this. Um, you know, there are some restrictions with the pyrethroids. We can't spray it around, um, uh, we can't spray it directly over water, for instance. Um, but typically speaking, um, you know, like I was trying to explain earlier, this is like the dosage for a mosquito. Um, so anything bigger than a mosquito is gonna survive most of this stuff.
Uh, what impact would it have on, yeah, uh, Lepidopterys, I believe? Uh, butterflies, uh, and what about, um, uh, beetles like, um, fireflies, lantebugs?
Well, we, we try not to spray when those are around or where they're around. Um, you know, I would say most, ninety-nine percent of your Lepidopterys are bigger than mosquitoes, and your Fireflies definitely have a, a bigger bulk than mosquitoes, so it's probably not gonna affect them very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Chairman, I have a very simple question.
Yes.
This was an amazing, um, presentation, so thank you so very much. Us as, um, humans, what can we do to, um, to repel mosquitoes and those bites? And the reason why I'm asking you those questions, 'cause I remember my grandmother and my mother buying this product, um, from Avon, um, and it was supposed to Skins So Soft, that's what it was, yes.
So Avon actually got sued, 'cause they didn't have any, uh, they didn't have anything in Skins So Soft, and they said it repelled mosquitoes, so they didn't have anything in it, but now they have stuff in it, um, because they got sued pretty heavily. Um, so what I would recommend people, I actually use a product called Picaridin. Um, it's P-I-C-A-R-I-D-I-N. It's much less greasier than DEET. A lot of people complain about how DEET feels on your skin. Uh, Picaridin doesn't have that. Picaridin is synthesized from black pepper, um, so it's really, really safe, um, and it has the same, um, limitations as DEET does, so you can use it on children of six months, so it's very, very safe. Um, and you have to, I always tell people, it's like the sunscreen. You don't pump the sunscreen on, you, you pump it into your hand and you apply it like this. That way you know you're getting the coverage, because these mosquitoes are, are very, uh, well-adapted to what they do, and as you're working outside, you can sweat, and that sweat will drip down your arm, and they will actually bite you where those droplets have washed that repellent off. And then, uh, also make sure you don't have any water on your property. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am?
Exactly what I expected. Thank you.
[laughing]
Any other, no other questions? We're good.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, I so much.
Very thorough report. Thank you.
Just need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're back on an agenda item to actually approve the, to actually, to appropriate the hundred and fifty thousand dollars from, uh, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Uh, do we have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? More discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand.
Uh.
Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, Agenda, we have a couple of grant items. Uh, Item Seven is a resolution authorizing submission of an application to the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, soing with our Conservation Division to apply for and accept of awarding a Streamflow Rehabilitation Assistance Program grant. There's about a million dollars out there in this program available, uh, and so we are gonna jump into that competitive grant. It's called the strap grant, um, so hopefully be successful.
Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie and Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Eight is a resolution authorizing execution of a grant from North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, Farm Land Preservation Division, awarded Forsyth County Cooperative Extensions Department for the voluntary ag district signs. You've got an associated budget ordinance amendment that'll appropriate seventy-five hundred dollars for that purpose.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Uh, we have several contractual items. Item Nine is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement between Forsyth County and Binti Incorporated to provide licensing software for the Forsyth County Department of Social Services, Family and Children Division. It is a three-year agreement, not to exceed a hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. It is one hundred percent state funds through adoption assistance.
Move approval. Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler, second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussions? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Ten is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to an agreement with Shellco LLC for the Forsyth County Agricultural Park Complex project. This is the grading package for that, kind of kicks the project off. Uh, the GMP is four million, six hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars, and, um, with, in the item, you'll note that the, um, building and the infrastructure, uh, bid packages, and, and that will come hopefully in May.
Move approval. Approved by Commissioner Plyler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Eleven is a, let me turn in the right place. Agenda Item Eleven is a resolution authorizing a request for the North Carolina Geodetic Survey to survey, mark, and map the boundary between Forsyth and Guilford County. That comes to you from a recommendation from John Burgess, our tax administrator, and also MAP Forsyth, um, so we'll get that-
Move approval. Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler, second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand.
All right.
Motion carries unanimously.
We have several property matters. Item Twelve is a resolution authorizing the grant and execution of a utility easement to Duke Energy Carolina's LLC to construct and access utility infrastructure across Forsyth County real-owned property located at seventy-four fifty-five Craig Road. That is the Blues Lake Park project, working towards getting that-
Move approval. Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Thirteen is a resolution authorizing execution of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and Memorial Industrial Community Development Corporation Incorporated for the lease of county-owned property located at Horizons Park at one hundred Horizons Lane. It is three point six two acres. It's a five-year term, and it extends that, their work in, in terms of agricultural, educational programming.
Move approval. Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler, second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Fourteen is a resolution authorizing execution of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and the state of North Carolina for lease of county-owned property at the agricultural building at fourteen fifty Fairchild Drive. Two office areas with an annual rent of two thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars, extending through November thirtieth of twenty twenty-six.
Move approval. Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item 15 is resolution denying a refund request to the tax assessor collecting the amount of $50,021.06.
Move approval. Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand.
All right.
Motion carries unanimously.
Have two added items. Item 16 is a resolution authorizing a second amendment loan to a loan to PCCI Land Incorporated to fund the purchase of the Budget Inn located at 600 Peters Creek Parkway in Winston-Salem and the demolition and clearance of the existing buildings and construction of low- and moderate-income housing. This is essentially a subrogation agreement, as has been described by the attorney.
Move approval. Motion by Commissioner Plyler. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bessie. Discussion, I know that Kyle Haney provided us with a fair amount of detail from a question, particularly I asked about whether the state had ever had any of the loans that they had issues from the North Carolina Housing Financing Authority, if I get it correctly. And the answer was no, and said, in fact, if anyone ever received, they said they had a few people withdraw before funding, but once the project had started, even if it encountered difficulties, they had figured out ways for it to be resolved and solved. So that was, that was very helpful to me, and I appreciate Kyle giving that information. Are there other questions or other discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Those opposed, please hold up your hand. Motion passes five to two.
All right. Agenda item 17 is the second reading of an ordinance granting a non-emergency ambulance franchise within Forsyth County to Medex Medical Transport Services Incorporated. A public hearing was held and closed on this item. It was passed by a vote of six to one on January 18, 2024. A second reading is required to formally approve the ordinance. I think that covers the legal aspects of it, and see a head nod from our attorney, so.
Move approval. Motion by Commissioner Plyler, second by Commissioner Bessie. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please hold up your hand. Those opposed? Motion carries six to one.
That is it, Mr. Chairman. The only other, I don't have anything else before we go into the briefing side of the agenda. And you'll note, because the city county managers are actually in town, I was going to run over and try to catch the tail end of the meeting, and so Damon's going to handle the briefing today.
All right. Are we ready to start the briefing?
Let me check.
Go ahead and declare the, declare the meeting closed, and I got a request for a five-minute recess. All right.